So, over the past few weeks, we've been talking about prayer. And you know, this has seen us look at different types of prayer, you know, delineated in the Bible. And we've seen that some of our practices are not biblical. Many of them, actually. We've seen that for prayer to be biblical, there is a need for us to reexamine our relationship with God. There's a need for us to see ourselves as talking to an intelligent person. That when we pray, we are not throwing our words out there to some mysterious being out there. Yes, God is a mystery. But enough of his attributes have been revealed in the Bible for us to be able to have a relationship with him and for us not to treat him like some alien. So important. You know, unless we, unless our prayer becomes personal, and it doesn't matter what kind of prayer it is, whether it's intercession, or whether it's supplication, or whether, whatever the type of prayer, whatever prayer we're praying, there is a need for us to pray knowing that we're talking to a person, an intelligent being. This is so important. This is not something that, you know, can be emphasized enough. It is the simple, the single most important factor in prayer, realizing that you are talking to God and that he's an intelligent being. And that there's no need for you to shout at him, engage in vain repetitions, because you don't do that with your friends. You don't do that with human beings. If you went before someone, or if you were having a conversation with someone and you kept repeating yourself, they would pull you up on it. They would bring it to your attention. And if you didn't change your ways, they would stop coming, you know, talking to you. They would stop associating with you. We don't like people who are like that, who are like a broken record, repeating themselves all the time. Why do we think that the God who created our intelligence, that somehow he enjoys something like that? The Lord doesn't enjoy it. There is a place for repetition in prayer, but it's not blind repetition. It's purposeful. And we'll come to that shortly. So we've seen that there are different kinds of prayer. There is supplication, which is simply about asking. This is the commonest kind of prayer. This is the sort of prayer that we engage in on a daily basis. Supplication is all about asking. It's about asking in humility. It's about putting a petition before someone. That's what supplication is all about. You lay a petition before someone. So the Bible tells us to bring our supplications, to bring our requests, to make our requests known to God. The principle there is, don't engage in blind repetition, just make your request known to him. Because you are dealing with an intelligent person. The Bible says that even before we ask him, he knows our needs. So there is no need to talk to him as though you were talking to some unintelligent person. So we should not engage in blind repetition. There is also the giving of thanks, which really is something that must accompany every kind of prayer. In all things, give thanks, the Bible teaches us. Why is Thanksgiving so important? Thanksgiving orientates our heart towards God. It makes, it puts us in the proper, it puts, you know, the proper, it gives us the proper attitude towards God. When you are thankful, it means you are recognizing that you are not almighty. You're recognizing that you are dependent on someone. You're recognizing that you are depending on his grace, his mercy. That you are not all that, you know, as Americans like to say. That's why we give thanks. You see, sometimes we feel like we've got to go before God appearing pitiful. "Oh, God, I'm like this. Oh, God, I'm a nobody." There are some people who do that. You might not be familiar with this approach, but there are people who do that. They approach God like they are nobodies and they try to debase themselves before God. And they think that by doing that, they are displaying humility. People used to do that in the Old Testament. In the New Testament, that's not how you show your humility. Do you know how you show your humility? By being thankful. Because when you are thankful, you are simply saying, "It's not down to me, oh. It's not because I'm good, oh. I don't have what it takes, oh. I am relying on you." That's humility. So we need to be thankful, not just give thanks, but be thankful in our heart. The attitude of Thanksgiving needs to be there. We must have a thankful heart. There is also meditative prayer. And we'll be going to be talking about that in greater detail, probably not today, maybe next time. But this is a, you know, this really should be a huge chunk. It should form a huge chunk of our prayer lives. Many of us fill our prayer lives with, or prayer times with supplications. "Lord, give me this, give me that, give me this, give me that, give me this." And we think we are prayerful. But if you're a true child of God, you know your father cares. Therefore, you don't spend so much time listing your needs before him. Because he knows. The Bible says even before, before you even thought about your problems, before your problems became known to you, he knew about them. He knew about them before the problems even came into existence. Before, you know, the Israelites asked for a king. And before he appointed Saul king, the Lord told Samuel to protest to them what manner of king he would be. And Samuel listed all the attributes. In other words, he talked about the mistakes that our future king was going to make. But the people said, "No, we want a king." And then he said, "Okay." But before God found a successor for Saul, who was the first king of Israel, God announced, "I have found a man after my own heart." When the Lord said it, David hadn't even been born yet. God knows about our problems before they emerge. That is why we should not spend so much time boring him with our problems. Let's just make our request known. But the bulk of our time should be spent meditating on his word. It should be spent in his presence, listening to him, being in tune with him. We'll talk about it more later. Another type of prayer is to speak to the problem. We haven't really spent any time talking about this at all. Speaking to the problem. Jesus said, "I say unto you, whatsoever, whoever, whosoever, sorry, shall say to this mountain, 'Be thou removed and be thou cast into the sea; and shall not doubt in his heart, but shall believe that those things which he hath said shall come to pass; he shall have whatsoever he saith.'" Think about it. The way we try to effect change is by, is through supplication. We go to God and we ask him to intervene. But Jesus was saying, "It is possible to get the same results by simply speaking to the problem." It's not always that you speak to God about your problems. Sometimes you speak to the problem about God. Bear that in mind. We're going to be talking about this type of prayer later. So why does the Bible delineate different kinds of prayer? Well, first and foremost, we need to understand that each type of prayer comes with laws. Prayer comes with laws. Have you noticed that there are certain prayers that you've been praying for a long time and you haven't got an answer? And sometimes you wonder what's going on? Every kind of prayer comes with principles. There are certain types of prayer that you are not supposed to be making. There are certain kinds of prayer that you're supposed to be making, that you are not doing so. We'll elaborate on that later. Through prayer, we remind ourselves of who we are in Christ. Prayer reminds us of our dependence on God. Prayer positions us to receive from God. Prayer is a platform for spiritual growth, especially meditative prayer. The purpose of prayer isn't to inform or misinform God about our problems. You see, sometimes we try, we misinform God because our understanding of the problem is wrong. We come to God praying about a situation, God says, "Hey, hey, hey, I know what this situation, about this situation better than you." Remember when Elijah was telling, protesting to God that he was in the very presence of God? Elijah was on Mount Horeb and the Lord had descended upon that mountain. He was in the very presence of God. And Elijah started telling God, "They've killed all your prophets. I am the only one." God said, "Yes, the only one. I have saved me seven thousand men who have not bowed the knee to Baal." Elijah didn't know about seven thousand people God had saved for himself. Elijah's understanding of the situation was wrong. Sometimes we misinform God, we come to God, we're wrong guys. So you can imagine, how can your prayer be answered when you're misinforming God? It's not because he's ignorant about your situation that he asks you to pray. There is a purpose for prayer. We're going to talk about that. Why supplicate? Why should we even come to God? Why should we even have to pray? Ask yourself something, this question. If God knows about our problems, if he knows about everything going on in our lives, why does he even need us to tell him about it? The answer to this question is, God did not create you and me to become, to be robots. He, when he thought about creating you, he thought about creating an intelligent being who was going to be interacting with him, who was going to be butting heads with him. One day, God said to himself, "Shall I do anything on this earth and not tell Abraham about it?" Think about it. The God of the heavens, the Almighty, who's going to do something on earth, and he looked down and he said, "I have a friend here. Shall I do something on earth and not discuss this with him?" In other words, God desires, he has, he delights himself in having interactions with us. That's what it all is all about. That's what it's all about. He wants to have an interaction with you. You know, those of you that are parents, when you were children, you're, when you were children, when you had, you know, when your children were young, were much younger, they would come to you, talk to you, ask you questions. Many of the questions were not relevant, but you were happy that they were there, just talking to you. You know that time comes when children just stop talking to you? When they hit their teens? They don't even want you in their space. You come there, they leave. The same ones that couldn't, you know, were talking to you constantly. They get to their teens and they're not so interested in talking to you anymore. And you, as a parent, sometimes you yearn to talk to your children. You yearn to have a deep conversation with them. Well, guess what? God created you for interaction, to give you for fellowship. And so he yearns to have conversation with you. And do you know why he created you with intelligence? You know why he made you intelligent? So he can have intelligent conversations with you. If God wanted to have a chat with the animals, he could have done it. He made a donkey talk. It's not a problem for him to get animals to talk to him. But he created you with superior intelligence because he wanted a being that would be able to interact with him, a being that can question him, a being that can, you know, not in a negative way, but a being that can ask questions, can say, "Ah, wait a minute, that doesn't make sense." As the father, as your children grow, when they say, they come up with intellectual arguments, you're like, "Ah, that was really deep." You feel proud that your child is able to come up with those strong arguments. Because you know their brain is developing right. In the same way, when God sees in you the ability to have intelligent discourse with him, it delights his heart. He just said, "I am going to Sodom, I'm going to do something on earth. But do I just do it without talking to my friend? Let me just have a conversation with him." So he went and met with Abraham. And went at a time, he didn't go midnight or very early in the morning. He went at a time when Abraham could prepare a meal for him. And Abraham prepared a meal. And the Lord sat down with Abraham. I don't believe those were angels. The Lord sat down with Abraham. And then what happened? He had an intellectual encounter with Abraham. When he had finished eating, Abraham started walking the Lord off. And the Lord told him that he was heading for Sodom because what he had heard going on there was very, very bad. So he wanted to go and check it out. So the Bible says, "Abraham asked God a question. 'Shall the judge of the whole earth do evil?'" I mean, can think, sit down and think, I mean, think about that question. A human being asking God this question, he said, "You are the judge of the whole earth. I know human judges, I know how they operate. That you are the judge of the whole earth. 'Shall the judge of the whole earth do evil?'" What if there were fifty people in that city, in those cities, who had not sinned against you? Would you wipe the whole city? Would you kill everybody in the city because of those, you know, in spite of those fifty? God said, "No, if I find fifty people there, no, I wouldn't do that." So he said forty. God said, "No." He said, "We're thirty." God said, "No." It went all the way to ten. And Abraham stopped negotiating with God there. But when God had that idea, when he thought about, "Let me go down and have this conversation with Abraham," what do you think was, what do you think he had on his mind? Did he think he would come to Abraham and Abraham would say, "Oh, you want to go to Sodom and Gomorrah and kill everybody there? Okay, you are God. You are God, you are God, you are God. Who can question you? You do whatever you please. You are God." This is how we approach him. This is how religion has taught us to approach God. Something doesn't make sense to you. A whole city is going to be wiped out. And you don't have questions? He said, "Who can question God? God is sovereign, he does whatever he pleases." He came to Abraham knowing that Abraham was going to ask him questions. And he yearned for an opportunity to have that discourse with Abraham. So that Abraham might, it was, it's like somebody waiting for some intellectual stimulation. "Come, come, let's, the Bible says, 'Come, let's reason.'" He loves to reason. That's what he calls prayer. And that's also the thing that we have crossed out of our, you know, the religion that we practice. We just engage in the monologue, we talk at him. And when we come across something that doesn't make sense, we don't ask questions. "Not Abraham. 'Shall the judge of the whole earth do evil?'" Ask his question to God. Because, "Ah, now somebody's talking, finally." Prayer needs to be intelligent. God is tired, he's up to here with the unintelligent prayers that are coming up to him all the time, unintelligent babbling. You know, a few weeks ago, we were talking about, you know, the book of Job. At the end of thirty-four chapters, is it thirty-two, thirty-four chapters? God said, "Who is this multiplying words without wisdom? Who is this? Who is this? Who is this? What's this voice coming up to heaven without any wisdom? Multiplying words without knowledge, in fact, that's exactly what it was put, rather than without wisdom." You know what? God is looking for intelligent discourse. Intelligent discourse with you. He didn't create you to be a robot. He created you to be a thinking being. So he wants to have a discussion with a thinking being. That's what he calls prayer. That's what he calls prayer. I've also written on this slide that, you know, God created us. He created the earth to be our sphere of influence. He didn't, he didn't create you and me. He didn't create you to micro, he didn't create us with the purpose of micromanaging us. In other words, he doesn't control every aspect of your life. Do this, do this, do that. He gave you dominion. But when you encounter difficulties in your dominion, you ask for help from him. That's the model, right from the beginning. Adam was given the dominion. But if he needed help, he could reach out and get more and get some from the Lord. That was prayer. So the purpose of prayer is to access additional resources for the assignment that God has given us on earth. When we supplicate, that's what we're doing. And we have to pray because God, you see, he desires the interaction. He could have, he could have created you with no needs. Have you thought about that? He could have created you with no need, never needing to be hungry. I'm never hungry, sorry. Never needing to eat, never needing to drink. He could have created you to have no needs. There's the power to do so. But he chose to make a being with needs. Ask yourself why? Because your needs are an opportunity for him to talk to you. Just ask a baby cries out because he's hungry. And in response, she doesn't, and she doesn't only get food, she gets contact with her mom as well. So God put needs in you that when you call, he said, "Call unto me, and I will hear from her, I will hear, and I'll answer you from heaven. Call upon me." Because your need brings you into contact with him and he desires that contact with you. So he created you with needs. Each time you have a need, don't see it as an enemy. Don't see it as something to come to destroy you. Supposed to bring you nearer to him. That's why we pray. Do you know that Jesus prayed? Yes, we know he prayed. But think about it. He himself said that you can speak to a mountain and it will be removed from one place or another. What did he need to pray? What did he need to supplicate for? He could simply use that power that he had. He raised the dead, he calmed the sea, the storm, he did all sorts of things. He could have just used that mode all throughout and never once supplicated before his father. And yet he did. When Peter took out a sword and cut off Marcus's ear, this was just before Jesus's arrest, Jesus said, "Put your sword back in its sheen. Don't you know that I could ask my father and he would send down the seventy legions?" Or so he said, "Of angels." I don't remember the exact number. Or he could say, "Company of angels." He said, "I would ask. I would ask, no command, I would ask." So you see, there is a place for supplication, even Jesus supplicated his father. Because that's a son going to his father to ask. And the father feeling the satisfaction, the joy of meeting the need of his son. When you supplicate, when you pray, when you ask, and he answers you, you are not the only one that benefits. He derives satisfaction. Your prayer gives him the opportunity to show his goodness, to show his kindness. So he loves it. He shows you his love through his prayer. So your prayers are an opportunity to develop a deep relationship with God. Your prayer is the platform. Prayer is the platform upon which you develop your relationship with God. As you come to him with your needs and he satisfies you with his goodness, a bond is formed, the bond grows, strength is strengthened. This point has been made already, so I'm not going to deliberate. I mean, when you're praying for your needs, just make your request known. Did you know that when you're asking quiet confidence, when you just make your request known? The way a child says, "Mommy, I'm hungry, what's for dinner?" They don't beg, they don't plead. They just put it out there, "What's for dinner?" And they expect to have dinner. When you do that, it's not a sign of arrogance. It's a sign of trust. It means you trust him so much, you don't feel a need to negotiate. You don't feel a need to cajole him. You know, people like to come to God, especially those of us from African backgrounds. We like to cajole God with big words, "Almighty God!" Because we think we can get God's head to swell up. Because we think we can bribe him. We can flatter our way into his heart. But that's not how God is. The fact that you, you said it once with confidence, that rejoices his heart. It means that, "This is my son, trust me, this one trusts me." Shadrach, Meshach, Abednego. These three boys were arrested and the king threatened to put them in, to throw them in a furnace, in a hot furnace, unless they bow down to an idol. And instead of spending all night praying and crying and begging God to intervene, calling power, fire upon their enemies, no. There's not even mention there of a supplication to God. I think if these guys spent their whole night supplicating, the Bible would have let us know. Because you know what? When Daniel also faced death in Daniel chapter two, the Bible says, "At night, the Lord came to him in a dream and revealed the book of Isaiah's dream together with interpretation to Daniel." Now think, how do people dream? Do they dream whilst awake? No, they dream whilst they are asleep. So this man who had the threat of death hanging over his head, the book of Isaiah said he was going to kill everybody. He said, "Please, hang on, let me talk to my God first." As a matter of fact, if Daniel had spent all night awake and crying and begging God, he would have missed the answer to the prayer. Because the answer to the prayer was, would happen whilst he was asleep, in his dream. So I believe that three boys did not do, you know, conduct an all-night service. They slept just fine. That is, assuming this thing happened, you know, the day after. Whatever the case, they came before the king and they said to him, "Oh, king, we are not careful to answer you in this matter. We are not going to be tiptoeing around, we're not going..." Let's cut straight to the chase. We are not bowing to this idol. Not now, never. God will save us. But even if he won't, we won't bow down to your idol. What do you think the Lord, just pause for a minute and think, how do you think the Lord felt? What a testimony. Somebody standing there, he hasn't spent hours crying and begging me and seeking me, but he is so confident about my goodness that he will bear such testimony before the most powerful king on earth and the most wicked? What kind of trust leads to that kind of behavior? The Bible says, "Without faith, it's impossible to please God." This is an example of someone, or people, being filled with so much faith. They had no need to supplicate. Now, some time back, I told you that the mark of true faith, the mark of confidence in God, not saying it's always applicable, or that you should always do this, or no. But the fact that you can take your food and eat it confidently without praying over it, is a mark of faith. Because you are not worrying about God not protecting you. The three young men, they did not spend a lot of time praying over this, you know, because they didn't like to pray. But they were not going to be intimidated into praying. Think about it. Some of us get intimidated into praying. The devil intimidates you so much that you spend all your time on your knees all night. Not because you loved God and you wanted to spend God, time with God. The devil chased you and sent you. to, to pray. Usually those kind of prayers, they are not even effective because they are made in fear rather than in faith. The three boys, they said, "Look, we don't even have to hesitate in this matter. The answer is clear to us. We are not bowing down and God will, will rescue us." No wonder God said, "Look, I'm not just saving this guy, I've got to spend the time with them in that furnace." I have to fellowship with these guys. What kind of guy, what kind of people, mind these are these? I have to, I'm going down. I don't believe God sent an angel. No, 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 no. That's a special assignment. When, when it comes to fellowship, he doesn't send angels. God doesn't send angels to come and fellowship with people. That's for him. He went, you, you know, who, it was, who said that that person looks like an angel or whatever, or the son of God or whatever? That was Nebuchadnezzar's men. They didn't know what they were talking about. Baba himself said, "I have to be in that fire with these guys." There's a passage that hit me quite powerfully about a week and a half ago from John, I think it's John, chapter fifteen. Jesus talks about, "If you abide in me and my word abides in you, you will ask whatsoever you will and it will be done." But he said, "If you dwell in my word, that my Father and I will come and make our abode with you." And I thought, "What does that mean?" I already have the Holy Spirit living in my heart, guiding me. In fact, in John chapter fourteen, Jesus had promised that the Holy Spirit will come to be their comforter. Then in fifteen, which was, you know, continuous conversation, he said, "Actually, if you abide in me," in other words, "if you are obedient to the Spirit and you adhere to the word of God, my Father and I," in other words, the whole Trinity, "my Father and I will come and make our abode with you." Then it dawned on me that that's a different experience from having the Holy Spirit. It's another level of fellowship. It's another level of fellowship. In, in Acts, I don't remember which chapter it was, but Paul left Ephesus, the region of, um, the region of Ephesus, the Asia Minor, and went to Jerusalem. And when he got there, they arrested him, put him in prison, started, you know, bringing accusations against him. They wanted to kill him actually. When things go really, really bad, Bible says, "Jesus stood beside him whilst he was in jail and said, 'Paul, just as you have testified before me in Jerusalem, so will you testify before me in Ro, in Rome.'" Who was that? That's fellowship. In Philippians, he said that, "I may know you and the fellowship of your suffering." He wasn't talking about that he didn't have fellowship with the Holy Spirit every day. Yeah, fellowship with the Holy Spirit every day, that was just normal. But he saw that there was something higher where you identify with Christ so much. What happened to him happens to you. It's like the two of you are one. He had the Holy Spirit in his heart, but Jesus came and stood next to him. I believe it was the Lord that went into that furnace to testify that I am pleased with these three young men. A prayer of faith does not necessarily involve multiple words. We all know about the story of Hannah. She could barely open her mouth, she could barely, you know, utter words. Yet, what power stood behind her prayer? We've talked about how we don't need to use vain repetitions, vain repetitions. We also started talking about intercessory prayer. We explained to intercede is to pray on someone else's behalf. You know, it's, it's to present someone's problems before God. The answer to that prayer may take a while and the reason is that it involves someone else's free will. You don't have control over someone else's free will. Remember, if there's something, if you pray to God and there's something hindering your prayers, the Lord can reveal it to you. And you can, through the change of attitude, you can speed things up. But you don't have that control over someone else. God has limited himself with his word, with his will, with his plans. So once he's chosen to give us free will, he's not taking it back. So we've got to understand that there are limitations, there are restrictions here on this earth. We know, we talk about God being almighty, can, of course he can do all things, but there are certain things he will not do or he cannot do, not because of his ability, but because of his word, because of his will, because of his plans. You can pray all day, you can fast all day. If it's contrary to his will, he will not do it. You come, your faith can't force God to do anything. It is often necessary for us to pray repeatedly when it comes to intercession because we're dealing with someone still, where we're dealing with situations that need to be targeted specifically with prayer. Intercession is really a very, very specialist kind of prayer. It's a very specialist kind of prayer. You see, when you intercede, we partner with God. I mentioned that and I gave you an example of how the Lord put it in my heart to send money to somebody who was in desperate need. That's only one level of partnership. You see, when we partner with God, the best example that I could find is to picture a surgeon, a doctor, a surgeon, performing an operation on a patient. If you've seen, you know, there are lots of TV shows these days that, you know, that portray that particular scene. What you will often see is the, the, the main surgeon carrying out the operation, busy cutting away and then he'll do this and then one of his assistants will put the exact instrument that he needs. He might say forceps and they'll give it to him, this, and then, and then he uses, sometimes he doesn't have to say it because the assistant knows exactly where they've reached in that particular procedure and knows what next, next instrument is needed. So they pass it on and then there is cooperation, seamless cooperation between the surgeon and the surgical team. Why? Because the team understands exactly what the, the surgeon is doing. When you intercede, imagine yourself as one of the surgeon's assistants with the chief surgeon being God himself. He's doing work on this earth and he's looking for people to cooperate with. He was about to do something on the earth in Abraham's day, so he said, "Let me go down and get this assistant involved." Abraham started interceding. So likewise, when you intercede, when you pray, what you are doing is you are coming to God in order to work with him. There are really three types of prayer. There's, of course, there's thanksgiving, which really is a kind of prayer that should accompany all forms of prayer, but primarily there are the three kinds of prayer. Prayer that involves asking, prayer that involves partnering with God and prayer that involves declarations. So there are three kinds of prayers. Asking, that's the supplication. Make your request known to God. Partnering, that's intercession. It's in the area of intercession that you partner with God. And it's the one area where intelligent prayer is so important. Because God is looking for people to work with. He's not looking, imagine the surgeon trying to, you know, operate on a patient. The anesthetist is sitting there at the end of the bed. He's giving the patient anesthetic and he's checking, you know, measuring various, taking various parameters in the body just to make sure this patient will stay alive throughout the procedure. And then guess what? Imagine that the surgeon is working with assistants who haven't got a clue what he's doing. He wants this particular instrument, they give him something else. See here? What, what do you think is going to happen? He going to get frustrated, the surgeon, and then the whole process is going to drag on. That's going to make the anesthetist very, very nervous because the patient might wake up with their tummy still open. When we intercede and we come before God like with, with mindless chatter. "Oh God, oh God, oh help me, oh God!" And we think we are praying. We are like a team, a surgical team that is clueless about what the surgeon is doing. That's what, that basically, that's what it, that's what it is. So essentially you are just crossing to God, just look, God is there. No wonder we pray and pray and pray and nothing changes. I mean, our countries, where we come from, I mean, look at the number of people praying in Ghana, every, especially Friday night. The whole nation's praying. And yet, we are where we are. How much, how much, how many of these prayers actually get to heaven? We need intelligent prayer. Prayer that takes into account the, what God is actually doing. It's like, I'm not just throwing my words. I understand what God is trying to do and I'm going to pray strategically just to, just to promote what he's doing rather than just shower him with words. Let me take you to some examples. Daniel's prayer. Daniel is a good example because, um, people often quoted, they talk about Daniel's fasting, twenty-one days fast and all sorts of things, you know. So let's really see, let's begin to examine God's perspective on this particular issue. "In the first year of Dirreus, the son of Arceus, of the lineage of the Midas, who was made king over the realm of the Caldeans. In the first year of his reign, I, Daniel, understood by the books the number of years specified by the Lord, by the word of the Lord, through Jeremiah the prophet, that he would accomplish seventy years in the desolations of Jerusalem. Then I set my face toward the Lord God to make requests by prayer and supplications with fasting, sackcloth and ashes." Daniel chapter one verses one to three. So let's, let's put this in context. Daniel was one of the young captives, Israelite captives brought into Babylon, during the reign of Joachim, King of Judah. Nebuchadnezzar conquered Jerusalem and brought the king's family over. But then he thought, "Wait a minute, surely this country must have some intelligent people there, they must have some smart guys there." Rather than killing all of these guys or turning them into slaves, let's look for some intelligent guys there. Let's educate them in the learning, in all the, all the wisdom, in all the science, the scientific knowledge of Babylon. By the way, that was the most civilized nation at the time. So let's, 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 let's tap into the resources from Jer, from Jerusalem. And Daniel happened to be amongst the boys that were, were chosen, were trained. And Daniel rose through the ranks. Until now, he was serving very close to the king. Daniel's a very interesting character because you know that Babylon fell to the Persians. The king, um, I think the king at the time was called Nubianus or something like that and his son Belshazzar was in charge in, in Babylon. And this Belshazzar had no fear of God. He threw a party, went and gathered everybody, then he went and got the vessels of God taken from the temple in Jerusalem. Brought there, they were drinking from there and just messing about. Instead of bringing fire upon all of them, the Lord just brought a hand to write on the wall. "Many, many, take ill a person. Your days are numbered." So God said, "He has weighed you and found you to be wanting." You know, I remember when my kids were younger, we used to watch cartoons together and I can just picture a cartoon scene where one of these cartoon characters stands on the scale and the scale goes zero. Weightless. God said, "I've weighed you. I've not found anything good in you. You are weightless." Belshazzar began to shake. According to historians, he shook so much that actually he became incontinent. That very night, Babylon was taken, fell to the, the Persians. The first king was Cyrus and Cyrus issued a decree. According to Josephus, I think, a, a Jewish historian, Cyrus marched into Babylon and who did he meet there? Daniel. And Daniel showed him Isaiah chapter forty-five, in which God had prophesied about the coming of Cyrus hundreds of years earlier. When Cyrus saw what had been written about him before his parents were born, he said, "This God is too big for me." He issued a decree. "The Lord God has called upon me to build him a house in Jerusalem," referring to the temple of God. Now, who amongst you is ready to go? Only few people left and went to Jerusalem. So for Daniel's, from Daniel's perspective, he had, he had, you know how, you know, a few months ago, we were talking about how to find your calling and we talked about how some people, God had, God, God will make them into triggers. You would trigger something. Some people will be facilitators. Daniel had triggered something, but he wasn't getting the response that he was looking for. He, he, he wanted to see more happen. Wasn't seeing it. So in, in the first year of Dirreus, who was, if you like, king under, 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 what's his name? Cyrus. He was made king over the realm of the Caldeans because the, the Persian empire was very big, so that a part of it, which would be, you know, modern day Iraq, was, he was made ruler over that part. During his time, Daniel said, "No, no, no, I need to pray because God, God had promised that Israel's captivity would only last seventy years. Seventy years have passed, the decree has been passed for, for Jerusalem to be rebuilt. What's going on? For the temple to be rebuilt, what's going on?" So he started praying, he started fasting, seeking the face of the Lord. Then the angel was sent from heaven. And here's the angel's response. "Know therefore understand that from the going forth of the command to restore and build Jerusalem unto Messiah the prince, there shall be seventy weeks, sorry, there shall be seven weeks and sixty-two weeks. The streets shall be built again and the wall even in trouble sometimes. And after sixty-two weeks, Messiah shall be cut off, but not for himself. And the people of the prince who is to come shall destroy the city and the sanctuary. The end of it shall be with a flood, until the end of the war, desolations are determined. Then he shall confirm a covenant with many for one week, but in the middle of the week, he shall bring an end to sacrifice and offering. And on the wing of abominations shall be one who makes desolate, even until the consummation, which is determined, is poured out on the desolate." So Daniel prayed. He didn't understand what was going on and God sent an angel to give him understanding. Daniel probably was just looking for an answer, "Okay, on the fourth of April, this is what's going to happen and then the temple is going to be built and then this is, and then you guys will be able to go back and occupy the land." God said, "There's a bigger issue here." God gave him a bird's eye view of his plans right until the end of time. Okay. The angel showed that Israel's restoration would take several years, several years, many years and would come in stages. The return from exile, rebuilding of the city, rebuilding of the temple, return of hearts to God. That bit is going on for more than two thousand years. Man's hearts being restored unto God. And God also showed that Israel's restoration was tied up with God's plans for the whole universe. Armed with this insight, Daniel changed his approach. So the Bible says, in the third year of Cyrus, king of Persia. So this is like a year or a couple of years later. Um, Cyrus, I'm sorry, a message was revealed to Daniel, whose name was called Belshazzar. The message was true. But the appointed time was long and he understood the message and had understanding of the vision. In those days, I, Daniel, was mourning three, four weeks, I ate no pleasant food, no meat or wine came into my mouth. Nor did I anoint myself at all till three whole weeks were fulfilled. Daniel, chapter ten, verse one to three. Then the angel appeared again with an answer. Do not fear, Daniel, for from the first day that you set your heart to understand and to humble yourself before your God. Your words were heard. And have come because of your words. I want you to notice a subtle difference in approach. Daniel had started, the first time he prayed in the first year of Diaros, the king. What did he do? He set out to confess his sins and we will analyze Daniel's prayer in a short while. He confessed his sins, sins of Israel and it was just, this is, this, I'm painting a picture for you here because this picture is very, very familiar. In our intercessory prayers, in our prayer meetings, confessing the sins of our nation, confess all of those things. Where did we get that from? That's what Daniel did. But the second time, when he set aside time to pray to God. It looks like his approach had changed, it is subtle, you have to really read between the lines to see it. The answer, how, how do I know that his approach had changed? What the, what the angel said to him? He said, do not fear, Daniel. For from the first day that you set your heart to understand and to humble yourself before your God. Can you notice that? The first time he was just praying, he was doing what we normally do. Pray, oh, God, please have mercy, oh, forgive, oh, God, let not your anger burn to her, oh, God. And we do those things because we think somehow we have to appease an angry God. But God sent an angel down to say, look, it's not about whether you sin or you not sin, though, I have a plan. Here's my plan. No amount of prayer is going to change my plan. Seventy weeks have been determined, full stop. Whether you pray, you cry, you confess, seventy weeks have been determined. Daniel had understanding. You see why I'm telling you about intelligent prayer? You need understanding, otherwise you're just gonna be throwing your prayers out there. So having understood the, ah, there is a bigger picture here, the Bible says, Daniel set aside time to understand. He had changed his prayer, it wasn't now just talking at God, it was, let me understand what's going on first. And the angel was sent for nothing else. But to give Daniel understanding. Intelligent prayer. So that you may understand what God is doing on earth and then you may understand your role in it and you may understand what aspects he wants you to pray about. Those of you living in the UK, but I think in Europe and it's spreading around the world, you will notice that there is a cultural shift. A cultural revolution going on. There are issues being talked about that in the past were not being talked about. There are doubts that people have about, problems that in the past, nobody had doubts about. And I, it gets troubling. Children confused about things they should never be confused about. And I said, Lord, what, what's going on? Why, what, what's going on? So you pray, you do this, you, you, nothing changes. It looks as if the devil is just winning. I said, Lord, I need, I need understanding. And as I was meditating on this issue, one day, the Lord just revealed to me. There are organizations working behind the scenes, pushing their ideologies onto society. Pushing them in the schools, pushing them on governments, pushing. So when we pray to our governments to have wisdom, ah, we're wasting our time. There's someone pushing. Then you are just praying that God will open their eyes. How can they, why, why is that going to happen? I discovered that my prayer needed to change. I started praying, God, cause confusion in these organizations. Cut off their sources of funding. Weaken the organizations. Sewing evil, weaken them. And recently. I was just, I just came across a news item. I was shocked when I saw it. But exactly as I was praying. The Lord. Has begun to do it in that particular flag, so praying for the politicians to see ways that are not. But causing confusion, causing commotion, therefore, one of the biggest. Guys, philanthropists around, funding these organizations. They've changed their policy. They're no longer going to be funding some of these organizations. Praise God. So the Lord showed me that if you want to partner with him. If you want to help him do his work on earth. You need understanding. You need him to open your eyes to see what's actually going on. So that you can target your prayer and you might wonder, why does, why does my prayer need to be specific, why does it? Remember the analogy I gave you about the surgeon? Working with a team of, you know, with a surgical team, nurses. Junior doctors. Et cetera, et cetera. And each member of the team being fully aware of what the surgeon is, what outcome he's trying to. Achieve or work towards. And helping him. By passing the right instruments to him. In the same way, you are around God's table whilst he's working hard, you, you pass him what he needs. In the form of your intercessory prayer. That's why it needs to be specific, it needs to be targeted. God help, help Africa. What kind of prayer is that? What kind of prayer is that? Pray with resentment. Pray with resentment, when you understand the situation, then, then you don't have to spend hours. That's why I discovered. The intercession doesn't have to be, yes, it needs to be repeated, but it doesn't have to be hours and hours of repeating the same thing before God, no. Because it's targeted, when you're hitting the right note, when you hit it, bam, you know within your heart that you've hit the nail on the head. And the answer is swift. God is looking for intelligent prayers, intelligent praying. Not just you throwing multiple words out there. Anybody can do that. Jesus taught his disciples to pray like this. That will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Now, that prayer, because you know, Jesus, the Lord's prayer was supposed to teach Jesus's disciples how to pray. So I believe that all the different kinds of prayers are immersed right there because, you know, the teacher's how to pray and he just taught them one prayer. And yet, the Bible tells us to pray all kinds of prayer and supplication. It's very interesting the way the Lord says all kinds of prayer and singles our supplication. I feel like it's because the Lord knows that, you know, we, that what brings us to him is our needs. So supplication is just, is just single that, so that, oh, and your supplication is which is the one that matters to you the most. But we're supposed to pray all kinds of prayer. So I believe that all the different kinds of prayer are there in the Lord's prayer. And the part that talks about that will be done on earth as it is in heaven, that is intercession. That talks about partnership. You are trying to get God to do his will on earth. But you are smart enough to know that God has limited himself. To operate, he has restricted himself to operating through man. And you are man. Therefore, he's gonna operate through you. Therefore, when you start praying for his will to be done, remember that that will will need to be done through you as well. So you're supposed to be partnering with him, so intercession is about partnership. And when we intercede. We are asking for God's will to be done on earth and that means first knowing the will of God. Intercession is about. I think I've repeated myself here on this slide. God doesn't just want us to throw our prayers out there, he wants us to work alongside him. Remember the story of creation? God created the animals, then he brought them to Adam. To name them partnership. I create your name. I create your name and the Bible says, whatever name came to Daniel's, came to Adam's mind, if I had Adam, whatever name. Adam chose, that was it, God didn't say, okay, let's correct this one, no. If he said, that's, this is the name, that was it. He trusted Adam. Because he had given Adam intellectual capabilities. To be able to think. To be able to come up with something intelligent. And when Adam did, he, he accepted it. God has always wanted partnership, poor apostle, the apostle writes. We are partners with God. We are coworkers with God. We are partnering with him in everything that we do. Especially in intercession. To partner with God, we need to understand his will, otherwise in the Bible says, can two walk together unless they be agreed, Amos, chapter three, verse three. There must be some agreement. That's why we need to understand his will first. If only we would spend more time discerning God's will and less time talking to him. We would get much better results. Through intercession, we discover his work on earth and we pray that he might accomplish them. Good intercessory prayer is intelligent. Now here's an interesting part. We know. That. The Holy Spirit, God has given us the Holy Spirit and he lives in us. We know he's our comforter. We know he's our teacher. We know he has come to help us remember what we've been taught. These are all the different roles of the Holy Spirit. But did you also know that he helps us? In prayer, he helps us to intercede. He intercedes along with us. The Bible says, the Bible refers to the Holy Spirit as Paracletus, that's the Greek word and it's been, it's been translated as a helper. And the helper is good, but he doesn't really paint the picture of what was going on. I gave you the example of the surgeon with assistants. And the level of cooperation that must exist between them. Let me give you another example, let's say that. Your car has broken down by the roadside, don't wish it upon anybody. And. You're standing there looking a bit stranded, you opened the bonnet, but you're not quite sure what's going on. Then another car pulls up beside you. A man jumps out, so, oh. What's happening? Can I help? At that time, what's needed? What's needed is cooperation between the two of you. This person. That has come, let's assume, let's assume that he's got the knowledge, he knows what to do. But even though he knows what to do, he cannot help you unless you let him. But supposing he comes and stands next to you and you, you allow him, you engage in conversation and you explain what's been going on. He gets to understand it, he says, oh, okay, this is what we shall do. Having understood your, your, your situation. He's the much better place to help you. He is not coming to take over your problem. He's here to cooperate with you to find a solution. The Holy Spirit is a helper. He hasn't come to take over your life. He has come to be alongside you. To work alongside you in and to help you achieve the goal that you are trying to achieve. Of course, on condition that that goal is what God wants to achieve as well. So when you align yourself with the will of God, the Holy Spirit comes alongside you and helps you to achieve that. When you stray from that narrow path, doing your own thing, he can't help you achieve that. But when you are on that narrow path, he helps you achieve. The goal that you set before yourself, the goal that lines up with God's will. Paracletus, the helper, that's what he's come to do. And one of the ways in which he helps you is in the area of intercession. Because we don't know how to pray as we ought, I mean, that's been established, you know, ostensibly in this, in this Bible study. We know that we don't know how to pray. So the Spirit comes and he helps us and in Romans, chapter eight, he says, with groans. That cannot be uttered, you know, a couple of sessions ago, I think, Arabite was you that brought up the question of speaking in tongues and we talked about how it's been abused. Yes, that was the negative side of it, but there is the positive side. God gave us the ability to pray in another language because we, we don't always have it here. What to say to him? So imagine that your helper comes alongside, he hears your prayers every morning, oh, God, this is, he's just thinking. I've come from heaven and I know this kind of prayer doesn't even arrive there. Let me help this person. He puts his words in your mouth. Then you start praying. Therefore, you speak mysteries unto God. Your understanding is unfruitful, your brain can't tap into it. There are issues that you don't know about yet. Problems you don't understand yet. But he gives you a language. And that's the wisdom of God to bypass your brain because. We've been learning in this Bible study that the biggest hindrance for many of us lies right between our ears. This is where the obstacles are, so sometimes he has to bypass this and he does it by giving you the ability to pray with groans. Those of you that have experienced the baptism of the Holy Spirit, you know what I'm talking about. There are times when you want to pray and no words will come on instead that groans, you, you sense a groaning from your spirit. That's the Holy Spirit. The Bible says, he that searches the heart, he searches your heart like this. Stares up like the way you stare, you know, bank or some, or some soup. He stares, 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 then he brings out the, the relevant issues, the nonsense stuff, he, he, he brushes aside. The relevant issues, things that your father needs to know about, things that heaven needs to send help for. Then he gives you a language to speak it because if he brought all of these as words to you, some theory that you read about. Some, some professor said, we'll question God's purposes and you say, ah, this thing doesn't even make sense. You ruin your prayer, so what does God do? He bypasses all of that with a prayer language directed to heaven. The Holy Spirit helps you to intercede for yourself. As well as to intercede for other people. That's the purpose of a prayer language, that's the purpose of speaking in tongues. A powerful tool that God has given us. If you don't have that ability, you can have it. You can have it. There are people who, one lady, she used to be a Catholic. Then she'd be, got born again. And she wanted the baptism of the Holy Spirit. And being a Catholic, you know, she, her theology was completely messed up, she had gotten saved, but she didn't really have good theology. On this subject, she figured that prayer must involve candles because, you know, Catholics like to light their candles. So she lit some candles and she, because she heard the word baptism of the Holy Spirit, she figured that it must involve water. So she went into the bathroom, filled the bathtub with water, went in, lit her candles. And started praying and she got baptized in the Holy Spirit. God will bypass your foolishness, you bypass your ignorance and meet you at your point of need because he can. and meet you at your point of need because he can see your heart. You can get baptized in the Holy Spirit wherever you are. Right now, if you have a desire for a prayer language that will enable you to speak mysteries, will enable you to bypass the blockades in your head, will enable you to speak about the deepest matters of your heart that you've never found the right words to talk to God about. The Holy Spirit will give you the ability to pray to God about your weaknesses, about your problems. So in intercessory prayer, the Holy Spirit comes alongside us. He reveals the will of God to us. He prays through us. He shows us how to better direct our prayers. In the same way that Angel Gabriel helped to redirect Daniel's prayers. As we gain understanding, we may change our approach. And we're going to be rounding up, or rather, we are rounding up. In Paul's letter to the Ephesians, we read about Paul's inter- intercessory prayer. There's a bit of context here that'll be helpful to understand. Ever since I first heard of your strong faith in the Lord Jesus and your love for God's people everywhere, I've not stopped thanking God for you. I pray for you constantly, asking God, the glorious Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, to give you spiritual wisdom and insight so that you might grow in your knowledge of God. I pray that your hearts will be flooded with light so that you can understand the confident hope he has given to those he called his holy people, who are his rich and glorious inheritors. I also pray that you will understand the incredible greatness of God's power for us who believe in him. This is the same mighty power that raised Christ from the dead and seated him in the place of honor at God's right hand in the heavenly realms. So this is really not a prayer, it's more Paul reporting about his prayer. He was telling the Ephesians about what he has been praying. Paul's prayer was informed by knowledge, revelatory, revelation, knowledge and understanding. Paul knew exactly what he wanted to see in the believers. You know how sometimes somebody says, oh, pray for me, pray for me, and then they don't tell you anything, and then you also go to God, oh, God, I'm praying for this, but I help him, do this thing. You've thrown your prayer away for nothing. God, God listens to that person. What exactly does this person want? Remember, he responds to faith and he responds to a need. You haven't identified the need. So you can't even pin your, your faith to that prayer. It's just one of those prayers that you throw out there because somebody said, pray for me. But share your burden with me. Let me understand what pain you're going through. Let me feel that pain. Then let me cry out from the depth of my heart. The Lord responds to that. Paul understood the need of the Ephesian church. He knew what sort of Christians he wanted them to become. He knew what plans God had for them. Who God wanted to turn them into. He had that blueprint in front of his eyes. And now he could direct his prayer specific because he had understanding of God's will. Prayer without knowing God's will is like a lottery. But just throwing out there hoping something will come out of it. When you know his will, then you can be confident and you can relax. Rest, you can rest assured that you're going to get an answer. So there's so much to say about intercession, but I think we are going to um, stop here so that it can give you opportunities to share with us what you have learned. So quickly, let's quickly recap. God desires intelligent praying. Intelligent prayers. And to pray intelligently, you need knowledge, you need understanding. Otherwise, you're just throwing your prayers out there. Daniel prayed, confessed his sins. He was essentially checking every box. Uh, in the sense of Israel, I mean, in the sense of, just make, confess everything, the scatter gun approach. He was just trying to tick every boss because he didn't know what was going on. But God knew his heart, the sincerity of his heart. So he sent an angel, not with an answer, with understanding. Go and open this guy's mind so he can understand what's going on. The next time Daniel prayed in Daniel chapter ten, because this is a, Daniel chapter nine. Next time he prayed, he changed his approach. This time he was looking for understanding. And the Lord sent the angel again to give him understanding. And we said that this approach is intelligent approach because God created you as an intelligent being so he can have someone to communicate with. He gave you brains bigger than that of the animals. He could have been, you know, communicated with the animals, but he chose to communicate with you. We said that when God, one day woke up and said, shall I do something in the earth and not share it with my friend Abraham? And he went down and, and had a meal with Abraham and shared his plans with him. And we said that when he said that, did he do it because he just wanted, um, you know, Abraham to just say, oh, 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 yeah, oh, yes, yes, Lord, you are good, uh, you, 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 you know, you are sovereign. Just do whatever pleases you. No, he was waiting for a rebuttal. He was waiting for somebody to question him, somebody challenging. And Abraham challenged him, he said, shall the God of the whole earth do evil? God say yes. God say, yeah. God is looking for somebody that's going to ask him questions. He says, let us reason, come, let us reason. But you don't love to reason, you just like to give him a monologue. Let's reason. To reason, you need to think. You need to understand what he's trying to do. They say, wait a minute, God, that doesn't make sense. And he says, aha. He wants that intellectual discourse. Prayer is supposed to be intelligent. What we've tended to into is wrong. We've established that already. But now we are learning the, the better way to pray. And we've seen that when you pray, we're supposed to pray intelligently. We're supposed to partner with God and to partner with God is to understand what he's doing on earth. So we are going to stop here and I'll give you the chance to share with us what you've learned from today's session. If you have any questions, feel free to voice them. And if you have any contributions, please, um, yeah, share them with us. The floor is open. Who wants to go first? You guys, you know, there's no exemption on every week, everybody. So you have to come prepared, ready to talk. Who's going first?
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. So well done for going first.
That's all. The, uh, my take home is that God responds to faith and God responds to a need. And that in our prayer, we shouldn't just be, um, mumbling a lot of words. Um, like, um, God doesn't know what's going on, but to be able to pray, um, with knowledge and, um, with the backing of the word. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Very good. Well done. Yes, who wants to go next? Arba, do you want to go next? Your name is sitting on top of the list here.
Okay. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
God bless you.
God bless you too.
Oh, yeah. Uh, today. Uh, I'm not finished, do I do, I just wanted to be my one corner, right? That's okay.
Okay, okay, if you, if you don't.
I love you guys. Because I, you know, still talk about faith, or you know, like, but I, I think I heard you say that, um, if you, even if you pray with faith and it's not the will of God, you can pray and pray, uh, like, and the prayer will not be answered. Is that desire?
Yeah, so, yeah, so maybe I can shed light on that. I mean, at the end of the day, we can't force God's hand. So even though we talk about faith a lot, and those of us in, you know, from charismatic backgrounds, we really emphasize faith. And faith is important, but faith can only get what God has made available through his grace. God does what pleases you. He created the whole universe for his pleasure. It just so happens that when he does something that pleases him, everybody benefits. So when we pray, we are not trying to get God to do something outside of his will. Jesus said, pray like this, thy will be done. So your faith doesn't force God to step outside the boundaries of his will. Otherwise, then God would sin. Your faith is not going to force God to step outside the boundaries of what, of his will. You are supposed to believe for those things that he has promised to do. And he has promised far more than you can think or ask or ask or think. So you, there's nothing that you can think of that you want to ask that's beyond his ability. But just make sure that it's in his will. Now, when you say that it's in will, people get a little bit confused, you know? Or they might say, oh, so is it God's will for me to get married? Or is it God's will for? There are some things that are revealed in his word as his will. It is well for you to be able to feed your family. It is well for you to be able to have children. It is well for you to be able to have a husband. It, those things are, are set in within his will. You know, Jesus's disciples, um, when Jesus talked about divorce, they said, hey, if this matter is that serious, then it's better not to get married, oh. But Jesus said, but that's, not everybody can take that, oh. Not everybody can become a eunuch, oh. There's those that can, fine, but not everybody can. In other words, God, it's in God's will that if a person can't contain himself, that he should marry. It's in his, if you like, general will. There's no problem there. It's also his will that when people are married that they have children. So like somebody, oh, is it going for me? It's, it's in his general will. All of that is provided in his will, so that when you're praying about it, you don't start to doubt or question or wonder because it's there in his will. But what is it that's outside his will? You want to sin, you want to do something that's blatantly contrary to his word of God. Your faith can't get you that thing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, very much so.
Okay.
And then, and one thing that, uh, you know, I was thinking about, you know, how we are taught to pray in church, or even when we go to church and opening prayer. Everybody starts with, uh, uh, in the confession, confession of sin, confess your sins. And so it has become like, so even when you don't have anything to confess, you go and look for one whole sin to confess. I don't know what you think about that, because it has become like, it's like, if you don't start with confession of sins, then it's like, yeah, it's not started at all. So, uh, I don't know your thoughts on that.
Yeah, yeah. So I will be, you know, we'll be discussing that in greater detail next week. So I don't want to jump the gun, but all I can say is that it's, it's one of those practices that kept into the church some time ago. And people say that people can get, in fact, I used to belong to a fellowship where we did that every, and we used to meet three times a week. You know, for one and a half hours, two hours, three times a week, and we would confess our sins each time. And you know what I discovered? I could be going to fellowship happy. Singing on the way, this and that we go in. And when we entered, solemn atmosphere. Everybody on their knees confessing their sins. By the time we finished the confessions, the joy that I came to fellowship with was gone. Now who is it that gives the joy? The Holy Spirit. So I managed to chase the Holy Spirit away with my prayer. I, he, he came with me happy. We entered the prayer, we, uh, the prayer meeting, started confessing our sins and the Holy Spirit disappeared. Because we don't understand what Jesus did on the cross. That's why we think, I mean, John, first John chapter one talks about, you know, verses nine and ten, he says, that if we say we have no sin, we deceive ourselves. But if we confess our sins, he is willing just to forgive us our sins and cleanse us from all unrighteousness. And there is a context to first John that has been totally misunderstood. John did not set out to write a doctrine about sins. John did not set out to write a doctrine about sins. If you want a doctrine about how God deals with sins, go to Romans. Paul spent eight chapters talking about it. But we ignore everything Paul wrote about in, uh, Romans, and then we take two verses from first John and build our theology on it. Why will it not cause us problems? First John is not about that chapter is not about, first John chapter one, is not about sin. It's about fellowship. That if you go and start reading from the beginning, that which we, we've seen and, and, and is, um, seen with our eyes and felt with our hands, et cetera, et cetera. We declare unto you that you may have fellowship, for we have fellowship with the Father and the Son, and that you may have that same fellowship. Then he goes on to talk about the charis- characteristics of the fellowship. Then he goes on to say, if we say we have no sin, he is talking about somebody that is claiming to be in continual fellowship with God, but he's living in darkness. And he said, no, you are a liar. But if you confess your sins and come into the, into the light, you continue to have fellowship with him. He's talking about somebody living in darkness and claiming to be in fellowship. That's what the focus is. As a child of God who is enjoying, imagine that you went from one, we used to know this, our students days, we were crazy. You could go from one Christian meeting to another, straight, one from another. Imagine that in one meeting, the presence of the Lord fell and we all enjoyed. But if you came to my fellowship from that meeting where you were in the presence of God, you would still have to start with confession of sins. Can you see the madness? If, if there was no sin in my, in, in, in his presence, so that he was able to come and enjoy fellowship with me, but now I'm going to confess, so it means that I'm holier than him. It means my eyes can see some sin that he couldn't see. It's complete madness, total madness, and it's because we don't understand what Jesus did. But we'll talk about it in greater detail next week. I hope this is helpful.
Yes, God bless you.
God bless you too. Okay. Who's next?
I'm next.
Oh, good, Rita today. Good evening. How are you today?
By God's grace, please yourself.
I'm good, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you too. Um, please, and God bless you once again.
God bless you too.
Yes, um, one, what's, um, you talked about on praying intelligent prayers and you mentioned, um, intercession. Yes, so, um, I'm happy about this because this week, I think this week, I was just thinking about a whole lot of things and I said that. Um, sometime by time, I'm praying and then interceding and all that. I just realized, oh, sometime I rarely do that. So when you mentioned that God really, uh, prayers has a mumbling a whole lot, it, he's not interested in that. And that's one of the best ways or intelligent ways is to intercede. So I just want to say that I'm happy hearing this today. Um, that God wants us to pray intelligently and with that we, we receive much more from him than the plain pit tops. And also, please, um, this part that you made mention of, um, praying in the will of God, seeking his will. Um, if I'm clear, I just want to be sure, is that, uh, were you trying to say that so when we want to pray in God's will, um, it's based on, we find, when we find ourselves in a situation, so we look for the scripture that is in line and we pray accordingly. If I'm right, I just want to be sure, does that mean you are praying in the will, asking you for every situation or for what you're going through or for whatever encounter, whatever that you, you are passing through and decide to pray about it and you look for scripture? Is that praying in the will of God as you look for a scripture in that line and you pray? Does that fall in line?
Okay, okay. So yes, that, that, that is true. But maybe let me sort of, um, broaden it a little bit. So generally, God want, uh, God wants us to have this attitude. of constantly seeking to know him and to know his will. So it's supposed to be your attitude every day. It's not only when you've got a problem that you have to pray about, that you start seeking his will. God wants you to constantly have an attitude of, Lord, I need to know you, I want to know you, I want to understand you. And then, oh, God, there's this problem in my life, oh, what do you think about it? You know, before I even come to God solve the problem for me, he's like, what do you think about it? Give me understanding about this issue. And then what will happen is you begin to get thoughts. And we will talk about how to hear from God, because this is an area people struggle with. You know, people pray, 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 but the question is, how would I know that God is speaking to me? How can I know that God is answering me? Very often, God will give you thoughts, ideas. But many of us think it's just, I just my thought, just something that crossed my mind. No! God is not going to come to you in a booming voice from heaven. He did that among Sinai. God has spoken in an audible voice only a handful of times in the whole Bible. The vast majority of time, God will speak to you through your thoughts. He will drop an idea. So you will suddenly begin to think about something like that, hmm. And if you follow that thought, it will lead to another thought. Before you know it, it's led you to a Bible passage. Then you read the Bible passage and you say, oh, okay, then the Bible passage gives you understanding. So you are on that journey trying to understand. Meanwhile, you are still praying about that issue. God, give me understanding, God, give me understanding. Don't worry about the supplication part. Don't worry about, oh, God, solve that problem, because remember, he already knows about the problem. So don't worry about how you need to try and find a Bible verse that say, oh, God, your word says that you will help me. God, people do that. They don't do that, because I find that that's really non-intelligent prayer. What I want to do is, Father, you know my needs, you know I have this problem, I submit this problem to you. Now, give me understanding about why this problem exists. Is there a path that I am playing to maintain this problem? What can I do differently, God, that will change this situation? Father, give me discernment. That's how I pray. So instead of interceding, God, bring down your fire, act, 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 act. No, show me your, what you are doing already. Give me understanding. Then I can pray, you know, in a very targeted way. Let's say there is somebody troubling you at work, or somebody troubling, you know, you might be out of anguish, you might be saying, oh, deal with this person, go on, deal with this person. But let's say that God has also seen that in two years' time, this guy is not only going to be, you know, become a Christian, he's going to be one of the most powerful Christians around. Meanwhile, you are praying, deal with him. How is he supposed to deal with a guy? When he knows more than you, he knows the guy's future, that the guy is going to even become greater than you. How is he supposed to ignore everything that he knows about the guy and just do whatever you're telling him? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes. That's why we need to know what is, he says, Lord, this guy troubles me a lot. Father, open my eyes. Father, give me grace. Help me to love him. Help me to love her. Father, change my attitude towards him. You will be shocked that when you start praying like this, where you are now beginning to ask for love for the person, this person that was mean to you will just crumble. Many, many, I've seen it happen. I have seen it happen in my life. Anytime I have somebody antagonizing me, as soon as I change my my attitude towards it, because at first you think that they are, then I step back. Lord, give me the grace to be kind to this person. Boom, the person's attitude changes. So praying in the will of God, yes, it's in line with the Bible, but it's not so much the mechanical way that you just look for a Bible verse that, you know, because you are talking with an intelligent person, he is the one that put the Bible verse there. If he knows the Bible verse doesn't apply to the situation that you are quoting, is that going to affect him? No, let him give you understanding. Let you and let the understanding drive your prayer. I hope this is helpful.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So who's next? Rev, will you go next, Wazee?
Well, good evening. I was waiting for Rev to go, so I will, I will be joining the party then. And believe with everyone, and thank you for, you know, such insightful, um, work. I mean, we, we, I, I believe all of us are learning and growing. I want to believe that. And, and, and I just want to add a little to what you said regarding my sister's questions. We've all been there, you know, where if you want to pray, you look for a scripture, stand on it, and you pray. You know, prayer has become so mechanical that there is no relationship as yet to wait. We don't even like, um, um, Nana has said, partner with God, seek, what, 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 what are you saying about this? Because if we know most of our prayer, we might not pray it, let me put it that way, because we know why, like the last example you gave regarding someone in the workplace who that maybe God will be using in two years' time. So I, I think that, um, there is work to be done. All of us, as we learn, we need to realign what we've believed along the line. At one time, I was just thinking, um, one of the challenges personally, and I know it applies to a lot of believers, is that we've been taught to pray, but we don't look out for answers. Have you prayed? Oh, yes, I've been praying for two years. Look, what is the result? Because the end result of prayer is for answer. Call unto me, and I will answer. That is what it's about. So i- if we, we look up to the answer bit, I think that it will change the dynamics of prayer for us, because we partner with God, so even the, the target of our prayer will even change. So I think it's important that we take time, even before we go into prayer, to know the mind of God concerning that issue. Another thing you said that I really loved, regarding my sister's question is about confession of sin. You know, I have an issue with that as well. And one time I just started this like, supposing I sinned on Tuesday. So I will wait till I go to the presence of God on Sunday to confess. What kind of a believer does it make you? We don't deny the fact that you sinned. But the moment you sin, you have the spirit to prompt you that you've sinned.
Yes.
Then there, you do the needful, and you are out of it.
Amen.
So that is not, you, you know, we keep reminding God, and most of the time, we tell God, like he's a liar. You know, like the example you gave when you joyfully go to prayer meeting, and the moment you get the confession of sin, and it throws everything out. If the Holy God chooses to live in you and gives you the joy of salvation, and did not hold you accountable, and then you get to church, and then we, because we know better than him, tells you, you need to confess your sin. Even the one that, I mean, there were times that we even confessed, the one I knew and the one I don't know.
Yes.
It doesn't, let us grow. If yes, you've made it, then then get your soul back on track, and then you are done. You don't need to confess when you come before God. I, I hope it helps us all. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yes, that's very powerful. Um, yeah, confession of sins, that's, that's, that's a real, that's, that's a big one. But, um, yeah, we'll talk about it more next, next week. Good. Who else is here? Irene, you haven't spoken.
Yeah, I've been enjoying everything. I'm, I'm being blessed by the questions that people are asking. When it comes to the confession, confession of sin, it's interesting that we will be praying, thanking God in loud voice, and when it gets confession, the, everybody's voice will just drop. So it's like, if, if we are that embarrassed about like praying, when, when it comes to confession of sins, I don't know, I think, there, there'll be almost silence in the room, because everybody wants to say it softly and quietly so that the other person doesn't hear. That is just by the way. But, um, there's something that, eh, I wanted to find out, that's with the intercession. You know, we go to church, sometimes, though, they, they have topics that they think we should pray about. Not necessarily intelligently, it's just points, and then we follow the point. So it's like in your mind, you are trying to, even the way it's done in church, it's so mechanical that sometimes you don't even find scriptures in your head to back whatever you are praying about. They have just said, let us pray for this sake. Oh, just at the hospitals, we, we just pray. And as we have learned about prayer, and knowing that it is communication with God, and that it's not always about we talking, talking like, using a lot of words, but we have to also listen to what God has to say. When we go for prayer meetings and we pray all the intercession, we don't listen, like, well, maybe my, the churches I have been to, I've never, when, when we finish praying, there'll be sort of one minute silence, be like observation, or I don't know, then, then somebody will sum up their prayers. So it's, it becomes like a, a ritual, like what you are doing, you don't necessarily understand it. It's, you, you, they tell you that pray about this. We pray, we don't listen for any will of God. Somebody sums the prayer, we close and we go home. So, um, correct me if I'm wrong, like, um, something is definitely missing, because, eh, and in such a prayer, we cannot, we cannot partner with God, we, we can, we are not, by what you taught us today, like, we, it, it, it has to be done with intelligence. Because we need, we need, we need to understand the will of God and the role that we also play in that. And then we need to, by, by that, you will know specifically how to pray. But this is a, a case where we are doing, like, you, you just say it. You, you just, whatever comes to your mind, you say it, and then at the end of the day, we don't even know, we, 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 we don't, we don't wait to listen, like, to God. So, um, I don't know, in fact, learning about prayer is making a lot of things that we are used to. Eh, we, we must begin to question some of these things, because at the end of the day, if your prayer life is built on, and then we pray, or let's wake up at night, join a certain prayer group, pray, eh, put our knees before God, and never really have a time to, for God to let, like, I mean, speak back to us, so that we understand our situation. Then, like, ah, we are, we are, it's like, for me, it looks like we are deceiving ourselves. But the sad thing is that people enjoy prayer meetings even more than learning the word of God. Like what we are doing now. If you started and you said we were going to do prayer meeting, I tell you, this page will be recorded more than hundred. It looks like that's when the results, like, you are getting the results faster, or we need fast results, so prayer is the way to go. But obviously, people are waking up, eh, in Ghana, I mean, there are two prayer groups that if you're, if you're not on one, you are on the other. And like, with all the prayers that are going on, I wonder if people really can say that, okay, since I started praying, ah, ah, my discernment is more, or I can now hear God, or I've even heard God speaking to me. It's like, you come and say, oh, that's on your mind, believe that God will do it, and, and it's, and I, I don't even know how to e- end this. I don't know whether it's a question or a statement that I'm making, but it's just, it, it, it's sad to watch that, um, we, we are, we are zealous for prayer, but we lack the understanding of, eh, of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe as you, eh, you go on, I mean, God is helping us, and I pray that we, we can also share with our friends. Because this knowledge, we don't have to keep it to ourselves. We, we, we really have to, like, I mean, as Christians, when we meet our Christian brother, si- eh, sister, as you used to say that, when you were a, a young believer, you used to meet each other and ask, how, how, how is your Christian life? How are you growing? I think we, we must begin to, like, bring up topics, like, oh, what do you think about prayer? And then begin to share some of the things that we have learnt with other people, because eh, 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 the more we think that Ghana is a Christian nation, and that everybody seems to wake up and, and pray yet, we, we, the connection that we have with God is, eh, 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 there, there is a break in connection. And so we think we are speaking to him, we never hear him speak. So I think that since we have been, um, we have been fortunate to learn, let us also share with others. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
As Sister Abba said about, this is my thought about confession, like, as in the sequence. I think if you look at the model prayer that Jesus taught his disciples, it didn't fall, I, I mean, confession of sin wasn't the second, because if you look at the way he taught, there wasn't, I don't, I don't think even there is a, a sequence in, in, in that, but eh, if you were to be guided by the scripture or the, the way Jesus taught his disciples, eh, there wasn't any, the way we are doing now, no, it's not like that in, in the, eh, I mean, in the scripture.
We, we've invented something, something that's not, that's not in, that's not scripture. You know, Jesus said, just pray like this, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. As a matter of fact, he tied the request for forgiveness, for giving us our sins with our own forgiving of other people, because really, obviously, Jesus taught this prayer before he died on the cross. After he died on the cross, it meant that all payment for sin had been made. Therefore, you don't plead with God to forgive you your sin. It's been forgiven in Christ. You confess your sin. You see that you've done wrong, you, you, you know, you, you are remorseful. And then God doesn't need your remorse in order to forgive you. If God was to rely on my remorse to forgive me, I'd be in big, big trouble. No, he forgives me in Christ. My remorse helps me to not go back to the sin that I committed. It means going to benefit. So confession of sin is to bring it out from the darkness into the light. So that because you've now confessed, and the Bible also talks about us confessing our sins one to another. You confess your sins one to another. It's written in James. He says, pray for one another, confess your sins to one another, you may be healed. Why? Because there are some sins that we do in secret, and when you share with a brother, it's like you have committed yourself. You now, how do you go back to him tomorrow and say that, you know, I've done it again? So you've put a thing out there. All of this is not to try and persuade God to forgive you. He has promised to forgive because of what Jesus has done. You are merely aligning yourself with what Jesus did for you. That's why coming and pouring out, digging deep to find every dark sin somewhere to try and confess, you are not helping yourself. You're going to finish feeling actually much worse than you started off. Because nobody talks about their sins and ends up feeling happy. But there is some sin in your life. You know, Hebrews talks about, let's forsake the sins that beset so easily beset us. There are some sins in our lives that keep happening, that are the constant source of trip up. I'm not talking about some sin you committed somewhere, where you didn't even realize you are doing, no, there's some sin in your life that keeps, that you know, and he says, confess that, because that's really about submitting it. That's about bringing it before he's thrown and saying, you know, I've got to let go of this area in my life, because I've allowed the devil to reign in this area. And Lord, I want to surrender this area to you. That's the purpose of the confession. So that the Lord can cleanse you. It's not so that he can forgive you, because he has promised to forgive in Christ Jesus. But when you confess, you are, you are reading your system of the sin, so that you may be pure. Anyway, we'll talk about, about it in a greater length next, next time. Time is fast spent, so I think we are going to. Time is fast spent, so I think we're going to draw to, we're going to bring this to a close. Thank you all very much for your contributions, which are very, very helpful. The questions, I think, even helped to take the whole discussion to another level. So thank you for all the questions. And you have a blessed week and a blessed rest of the week and weekend, and see you next Thursday. God bless you.